Pledge allegiance if you'd like to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. What happened to our clerk?
I think she's assisting Ms. Pye.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll do the roll call ourselves. How about that? Shall we do that? I can see that Councilman Welling has been excused. Ms. Harris told me about that, so I know that Mr. Welling will not be with us tonight. Oh, there, we'll get back on track.
She does a better job.
Yeah, she does, a much better job, so I'll let you do it. We're at the roll call stage.
Okay. Councilmember Welling is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. We do have one item to add to the agenda, a Crime Stoppers drawing. I failed to recognize Mr. Lynch back here in the back. He's with us today, so if we can, we'll do that right after the minutes discussion. So if we can add that to the agenda, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sellers, motion is there? Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt, seconding. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the work, the council minutes for July 15 and the work session minutes for July 22nd. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we'll acknowledge those as they've been prepared, and now we'll do the Crime Stoppers drawing. Mr. Lynch, please, welcome.
Good evening.
Good to see you, good to see you're still doing well.
Still better.
Good deal.
Still need golf lessons.
Okay, it's time for our summer annual raffle, and what we do is split it 50/50, so I have a third place, second place, and first place on this draw. Nice. So we're gonna go, Larry, you're council president, you'll draw second, the mayor will draw the first place winner, and the new kid on the block, no one's ever drawn from this seat.
That's probably true, huh?
This should be good. Sounds good. This is for third place, and the third place winner gets $200. Nice. For a $10 donation, a good way to go. Pretty good investment.
Lisa Jones.
All right. All right, for the second place, which is $300.
You want me to find yours, Kane?
Crystal Lafond.
Nice. Crystal? Crystal Lafond. Nice.
Sorry, Kane, I let you down.
Okay, Mayor. It'll be good or bad. Oh, it's gotta be good. Whoever it is will be good. Gotta be good. Gotta be good. Matt Sunquist. Matt Sunquist. All righty. And he gets the $500. Excellent.
Good.
For all of them. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate your support. Nice, excellent. Thanks for, thanks for coming. We'll go, let's see, we'll go to the bills. We've got a warrant register before us. If I can get my computer to work when it comes. Questions, comments, concerns on the bills?
I'll make a motion that we approve those, Your Honor.
Perks of the motion? Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Discussion? Any discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. Council comments. Ms. Hagaman, let's start with you tonight, if you would like to. I know that you have, you may have something on your mind if you want to.
Start with our council comments? We'll start over here.
I think I'm going to, if that's all right.
Yeah, it's your time, say whatever you'd like.
So I'd like to read something that I prepared. This has more to do with the state than it has to do with the city, so I'm just gonna dive into it. I've been watching lots of movement throughout the state in regards to our public land use, as I mentioned before in a previous comment, and it's, I started to dive into it because it didn't make a lot of sense, and so I will read you what I have prepared. This is not local control, it's Senator Lee's Public Land Grab 2.0. What's happening in Wyoming right now is not a series of isolated land issues, it's a coordinated effort to open up industrial corridors that run straight across our state and is moving faster than most folks realize. De-listing the grizzly and reworking the ESA, we're told is about protecting livestock. The grizzlies account for just .04% of losses. What this really does is remove environmental protections that block mineral and energy development. Once those protections are gone, lands around Yellowstone and the Tetons, lands rich in coal, uranium, and rare earth minerals are wide open. And yes, those lands overlap with the grizzly habitat. This is the exact, already explored by federal agencies for developing surrounding the Tetons. De-listing isn't about wildlife, it's about clearing the way for industrialization. The Wind River Horse Roundup. Over 6,000 wild horses have already been shipped to slaughter in Canada, or as Representative Larson stated, they were sold up in Canada where they can process them, canum. Mass wild horse removal weakens federal protections on tribal and BLM lands, reduced tribal leverage, and sidestep Bureau of Indian Affairs oversight. That matters, because tribal lands are the, one of the last lines of legal defense in blocking unwanted development. And if they get steamrolled, we all lose. The Buffalo Field Office Plan. This proposed, this proposal covers roughly 750 square miles of public land in northeast Wyoming, land now under review for future coal leasing. While the current management plan finalized in late 2024 adopts a no leasing stance, the BLM has reopened the issue. They're asking for public input by August 7th on whether to reverse the decision and make hundreds of thousands of acres available for coal extraction and energy corridors. This is the playbook. They're clearing the flanks northwest, northeast, and Wind River so they can punch a corridor straight through the middle of the state, from the Powder River Basin to the Uintas, from the Tetons to the Red Desert. This is about linking mineral zones to pipelines and rails. The danger, they're calling in a national security. Under Executive Order 14157, that was just passed in the big, beautiful bill, cartel threats are now classified as terrorism. That means the Department of Homeland Security, the Department of Defense, and the Bureau of Land Management can bypass public input and local government entirely. They can seize assets, build surveillance towers, run drones, and enforce with federal agents, no state or tribal oversight required. They're readying the stage. Representative Hagaman, on Sunday, excuse me, Hagaman, claimed in her July 28 email that Wind River is vulnerable to cartel activity, but that's not a solution, that's a setup. It let the feds override tribal authority and skip the consultation process required under NEPA and Section 106. The tribes aren't the weak point, they're the legal gatekeepers, and that's exactly why they're being undermined. 4.5 billion in annual tourism is at risk. We lose access, we lose visitors. Even a 10% drop in outdoor tourism means a 500 to 700 million economic hit. 33,000 jobs impacted or lost, local businesses closed. Ranchers will face revoked or restricted gazing permits, water diversion, fences, land carved up in one to three mile sections like what happened in Nevada. Lease fees stay the same, but access won't. Hunters lose corridors and herds, reduced, limited tags, lost access, padded gates. Every hunter knows what happened in Pinedale when industry crept in. This time, it's statewide. Recreational users locked out, surveillance towers, no trespassing zones. Try camping near a mine or pipeline and see what happens. Local governments, we're left holding the bag, road damage mitigation, enforcement costs, while the profits leave the state. Wyoming will never look the same again. And while they say this is about rights, everything about it hands power to the federal government and multinational corporations. These are the facts. This is a shift of power from local, state, and tribal control to federal and corporate control. Resource management plans override, are the RMPs, like Ed Buffalo, they override state and county input with no veto power. Pipeline and open pit mining projects are not subject to local zoning and permitting once federal rights, right of ways are granted. Local communities, counties, and even state-level land boards are pushed out of the decision-making process. Wildlife delisting, management is theoretically returned to states, but in practice, it removes environmental constraints that prevent federal leasing and mineral development. Once those protections are gone, the federal government resumes full control over how those lands are used. Tribal consultation laws have been, are being bypassed by security pretext. Wind River is under attack, not because it's weak, but because it's strong. Section 106 of the NHPA gives tribes legal standing that corporations can't buy their way around. Tribes have been the legal gatekeepers for generations. Strip that away, and nothing stands in the way of full-scale industrialization. Federal surveillance, drone programs are already being positioned. Companies like Rainmaker Technology have already begun requesting FAA authorizations to operate drones across federal lands in Wyoming. While branded for cloud seeding, which is not a high priority with Wyomingans, and data collection, these drones, once approved, can be easily repurposed for surveillance enforcement or reconnaissance operation with zero public oversight. Three pipelines are already in the works. This isn't hypothetical, this is happening. At least three major pipeline corridors are already being advanced under federal energy and security exemptions. These projects bypass local zoning, permitting, and public input, even though they'll cross BLM, state, tribal, and private land. Once a federal right of land is granted, local commissions, landowners, and even state agencies are locked out of the decision-making. And we, and this does not end in Wyoming. Wyoming is the test run for federal corporate land consolidation across the West, Utah, Colorado, Montana, Idaho, Nevada, and the Dakotas. This isn't about wildlife, it's not about crime, it's about control. On the Wind River Reservation, which they are evoking the 14501, declaring it domestic terrorism under a drug guise, there was one, one arrest in February of this year with probable links to a cartel. Before that, there was an operation in 2013 that had a dozen, nothing in between. This doesn't warrant stripping the tribal lands and of their sovereignty. I am overwhelmed by the weight of connecting this, that's because it wasn't supposed to be connected. So now, we all have a choice between speaking up and staying safe, or to fight for something that's bigger than ourselves, or we watch our land disappear forever.
Mr. Sellers?
Yeah, mine's not near as dramatic. I just, a couple things I want to cover is, first, I'd like to recognize April Lang. She just ran the Norrisman Triathlon in Norway, which is like, my understanding, one of the hardest triathlons in the world of all, and to even be, to earn a spot for that is like incredible, and she did fairly well, from what I understand. So I just want to recognize her and.
I was just gonna say, you mentioned it's one of the hardest ones, I'm just questioning, is there an easy one? Interrupt your.
I think, I think if an easy one's 100, it's probably 500.
No argument, they all sound tough to me. Go ahead.
I can't do one, so I don't care if it's the easiest one, but, and then also, we lost two long-term businessmen in our community the last little while. This last week, Walt Everton, is 91, he was a locksmith, and I'm sure Mayor knew him well with his relationship into, a very, very good gentleman, and helped a lot of people in our community, and he'll be shortly missed. He became a friend of mine with all the years of working with locks and stuff, and I'm gonna, I, for one, I'm gonna really miss him. And two, we lost Lance Foss, passed away this last week, and he was also my neighbor, but he ran, had businesses and had commercial rentals and stuff, and so I got to know him over the, over the years too, and both of them are losses for our community, and so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Perks?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight?
The only thing I have is if you haven't had the opportunity to take advantage of the activities that are going on downtown and around town, I would suggest to get out and enjoy it. There's a lot of good activities going on for the young people and for the community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't think I can add anything myself, I'll just say we move forward. We do have a appointment to consider. Now, on our paper here, it says that this is a reappointment, but I don't believe it is. Is it, Mr. Lunsford? Is he on the board now?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't realize that, or did I realize that? Anyway, either way, we appreciate Lunsford being on our Housing Authority, and I would like to suggest or bring forth Rick Lunsford's name to be reappointed to the Housing Authority Board for a term five years to end March 30, 2030. Holy cow, never seen 2030. So if somebody would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Lynn?
Mr. Rick Lunsford.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion?
Good man. Is 2030 only a five years away?
That's what it says, that's what, maybe that's why I got flustered a little bit. I thought, well, I saw that date, my goodness. Yeah, that seems like.
I think Rick could be a great appointment, or reappointment, either way.
Either way. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved, and we appreciate Mr. Lunsford's continued involvement. We'll go on to our consent agenda. We've got several items there, it looks to me like they're all recurring events that take place, the bottom one there, of course, being Cowboy Days, and a lot of things that go around with Cowboy Days is here. Anybody that would like to pull any of those out, or can we consider them together?
I'd say together, unless somebody wants to talk on it.
Is there anything we need to know about any of these events before we move forward? I'll just entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Any discussion?
I'll reiterate what Mr. Schmidt said here, let's go enjoy all these events.
Absolutely. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That approves our consent agenda items. We have no unfinished business, we'll go to new business, and we'll start there with Ordinance 2506. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2506 is an ordinance of the City of Evanston, Wyoming repealing Section 4-8B, the code of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, relating to limiting issuance of more than one liquor license or permit to any one person. This is sponsored by Mayor Williams.
Thank you. I'll, this is on first reading, so I, I'm sponsoring, we'll, I'll entertain, for discussion purposes, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2506 on first reading.
I'll introduce, let the motion pass.
Mr. Sellers, you're making a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynn, seconding. Discussion?
I just got a couple questions on that, though.
Go ahead.
It says one person, does that, I mean, does that include an entity as well?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lynn, yes.
Okay.
And the story behind that is, as the ordinance indicates, in 2021, a provision, a mere provision in the statute was removed, and so now, a person, whether a corporation, a limited liability company, partnership, or individual person, can now own multiple liquor licenses or permits under state law, though we still have our ordinance that says you can. So this ordinance would bring us into conformance with the state statute.
Do you think, do you see this really having any effect on anything we got going on?
I don't think anything, I think there could be something in the future. I know that, that one prospective license holder was looking at the possibility of multiple ownership of licenses, and we, we do have that to some extent, to some degree, because you could have different limited liability companies or corporations own the liquor license. One could be A, one could be B, but the owners of A and B are the same.
Yeah, so you could almost, you could almost see people possibly consolidating their entities when they've got multiple entities, probably just, that's the only thing I can see as possibly an effect of this.
I have a question.
Please go ahead.
My only concern with this is that there's only 20 of these liquor licenses, and it could lock out, I'll answer that, other people from being able to purchase them. Are, are, is this relegated to just retail, or is it all of them, including the resort and?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Hagaman, it's, it's, it's in effect retail, because retail's the only one that specifically provides you can't hold more than one. You could own a restaurant, two locations, and have two restaurant licenses. That's permitted, the way that the statute and our code. To go back to your first question, it wouldn't alter the availability of those 20 or however many retail, or limited retail, or resort licenses we have out there, because there would still be 20 of them, and the ownership may be, as Councilor Lynn indicated, consolidated, and maybe one company owns three, instead of three different companies owning those three, but they're owned by the same general owners anyway.
Yeah.
So I don't see it having an effect on the number, and, and that, because there's only a limited number available. That's all you have to worry about.
I mean, and if you're concerned about people owning multiple ones, there's plenty of people that own multiple ones now, you just have to create a whole new entity to buy another one.
A whole new partnership.
There's a loophole to, to gather up as many liquor licenses as you want now or after this is passed. You just had to create an entity, different entity.
My biggest concern was not making, because there are only 20, and they are so very expensive, because they're blue sky now, you know, there are over 100,000, that limits private individuals, you know, to, to be able to access. You already, instead of, like a startup, instead of, you know, somebody who's already got them, then they, they've got the money behind it to do something else, whereas with a startup, it's limiting. That's what I'm wondering, if, if that's a concern, that we're.
I don't think, personally, I don't think this ordinance is, has a concern over that. I think we have a concern where we only have 20, possibly, but that would be a state thing to change that, or are we gonna offer more than that?
I have a question here.
Please, go ahead.
And I, just so I better understand, I guess this doesn't have any, any thing to do with the malt liquor or the, these other licenses, permit applications and so on?
Mayor, Councilor, that is correct. The limit, the catering permits and limited malt beverage permits, can have up to 24 of those a year. So that, and you can have one person, if you ever had, like, one person get 24 catering, that's possible, that does not affect us.
Thank you.
And this is almost just a matchup with what the state just did already, right?
Correct.
Further discussion?
Let them necessarily give me confidence.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
I've got a motion and a second, we're just in the discussion phase, so, if there's any more discussion.
As long as we don't have zero liquor licenses, I think I'm happy.
There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on first reading, we'll hear that two more times before it's, before it's finalized. We'll go to Resolution 2544. Mr. Harris, you read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Resolution 2544 is a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston approving change order number one for the Evanston Transmission Pipeline 2022 project.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Newsom?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, basically, this is a change order for some unforeseen work that we're facing on the transmission line project, so I'll entertain any questions.
Overall, how's that project going?
It has its moments.
I see its progress.
They are making progress. Some of the hardest spot, things we're facing, is some unknown utilities within even ourselves, trying to get through those and continue down the road, but they're halfway down Sioux right now, so once we get off of Sioux, it'll be a lot better. So they have done well.
That's the last road that, it's gonna be affected, essentially?
The little stub streets around Twin Ridge, but they're very short, but getting off of Sioux will be a beautiful thing.
Yeah.
And some of those issues you're talking about is what's facilitated this change order?
Correct. One of the first ones was truly trying to pothole our own line coming out of the water treatment plant. Unfortunately, we couldn't find it, and spent a lot of time, literally with a VAC truck poking around, until we finally discovered it and had a good idea where ours going, so.
Okay.
We're talking about an increase of 46,000?
46, 408.
Is that right?
And I will say item number three, the main purpose of it was to really secure unit price, and, and the quantity was arbitrary, thrown in there for flow fill. After I had to give this for your packet, the two pipelines that were calling for flow fill kind of backed off the need, so we definitely won't need 50 yards, but we definitely had to secure the unit price.
Okay.
Optimistically, that 17,000 isn't needed.
I would rather you underpromise and overdeliver, so that's, that's fine.
Yeah, but, but really, you know, this whole project is, is not a brand-new project, it's like remodeling your house. Everything we see. Everything we see is underground. We have no, no idea how it is, where it goes, so it was bound to face some challenges.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers, with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt, seconding. There is none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2545. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2545, a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming authorizing the execution of a contract for services with You Went to Senior Citizens, Inc., the Wyoming nonprofit corporation for senior citizen services in Evanston, Wyoming.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lynn.
This is just the contract with the Senior Citizens Center for the $100,000 that we allocated to them for, or through the budget. It'll be given to them quarterly, and they will provide us with their financial statements and things like that each quarter.
I think that's great. I think it's fun, I guess, maybe fun's not the right word. I appreciate the fact that we can feel confidence in, in working with the senior citizens. Again, the reputation that has been restored, I appreciate that very much. I think that's a great thing. I'm glad to see us be able to do this. I'll entertain an introduction on this resolution.
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Lynn, with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hagman, seconding. Discussion?
I'd just like to say, it's, I think it's the right thing to do, and glad to see we're moving forward.
I'm really glad we were able to do the full amount for them. What a deserving organization.
Mayor?
Yes?
If you remember during our budget discussion, we talked about that the goal was to aim this appropriation at their, at the meal, the meal delivery.
Oh, yes.
And that's what we did.
Yes.
Agreed.
Thank you. Appreciate that reminder. Yes, that's what we've, what we've done. Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I guess in the, when they check in quarterly, it's almost like, hey, here's, we show that we spent that money on food, correct?
Accounting, absolutely. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2546. Mr. Harris, you read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2546, a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming authorizing the execution of a contract for services with the Evanston Rodeo Series, a Wyoming nonprofit corporation.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn?
And this is the same type of thing. We approved this in the budget. It's just the official contract. For rodeo series, we did 9,000 for this year, which is what we've done in the past. I think last year was a little more, or the year before, because we carried over some amounts, but.
We, we carried over a little bit during the COVID years when things weren't, is that?
No, the bleachers, wasn't it? The bleachers cut them off or something?
Yeah, the bleachers was, well, we did carry over for COVID, and then the bleacher project.
The bleachers, I had forgotten about the bleachers.
That cut off some of their ability to have them, right?
Yep.
So this is back to the original amount they had each year, so.
Back to normal. And the bleachers look good, too, so that's a win-win, I guess, so. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Lynn, with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
How is the rodeo series going this year?
It's finished for the year.
I know. How did it go? Is anybody?
It went well. It was well. I hope it was well-attended.
I think it was pretty well-attended. I mean, it's never.
None of us attended, but we, quite well.
It's never attended like Cowboy Days, ever, but lots of participants, I know that. So I think they did okay.
I wrote down Ms. Hagman seconding that, if you, is that, I heard her before I heard Mr. Schmidt, but if I didn't, then Mr. Schmidt thinks he's willing to second as well, so we got a, we got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? There is none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. 2547. Mr. Harris, you read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2547 is a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming authorizing the execution of an agreement with Young Musicians, Inc. to provide music education and cultural activities and opportunities for the youth and promote the Celtic Festival.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lynn?
And again, this is just the agreement with Young Musicians or Arts, Inc. And we, we did 10,000, 5,000 for Mat Camp, and 5,000 for the Celtic Festival was the intention, so.
Thank you. And Mr. Sellers, I'm told you're going to recuse yourself from this decision, so we'll recognize that as well. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass, Your Honor.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Schmidt, seconding. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I have just one thing that I noticed on the, on the resolution. The one that I'm looking at says 2527, and I believe it's 47.
Might just need to correct that.
Oh, oh, yep, you're right. We'll get that fixed.
Yeah, it'll be fixed.
Good. Appreciate you pointing that out. I didn't look at that one. I've got it right here on my agenda, but. Further discussion?
I think this is a great program. I think it's great for our kids. My daughter did Mat Camp. See if I can convince my son to get off the golf course and do a little Mat Camp, but we'll see.
Good luck. Good luck with that.
Good luck.
It really is a great, it really is a great program for the kids, so.
If there's no further discussion, here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Thank you. Resolution 2548. Mr. Harris, you read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 25-48 is a resolution of the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming authorizing the execution of the Purdue Pharma LP opioid settlement memorandum
What do we need to know about this? I don't know.
This is, Mr. Mayor, this is another.
This one I just saw here, so what do we?
This is another settlement with another pharma company.
Okay.
In the opioid litigation. I can't even, six or seven?
I don't remember.
There's probably six or seven the city has.
I, I know we've had several.
Periodically, these lawsuits will be settled or approved by the federal court somewhere, or court somewhere. And then the City of Evanston, with other entities, the state receives funding based upon a percentage. I think ours is 1.8%. So it all depends what the total settlement is with Purdue, and I don't know, because it's not listed readily put your name on it. We've done this before. We, we have to execute our agreement with the settlement and send it in by the 15th of September to be eligible for any of these funds. They are limited in what they can be used for. They're not a general law enforcement. They're a treatment, all based around substance abuse, but particularly opioids.
The bottom line, I guess, and this is, this has the potential to bring us money as a community. I guess there you have the answer. Whether it's good or bad, if it brings us money, then it's good. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt, is that with a motion? Are you making a motion to pass it as well?
Motion to pass, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding.
I know.
Good suggestion.
I know we've been getting some fundings on, you know, from different situations on this opioid stuff. If I was to make a suggestion when we decide to spend it, I would love to see it funneled more toward the kids if we can. I know we need some things that we have to pay for, but the more we can get the kids, you know, I mean, I grew up in the DARE program, I guess, so like, let's stop, stop it before it happens. So if we can use some of these funds to really help the kids and try and keep them away from the opioids, the drugs.
Good suggestion.
I think we should stop it there instead of some other things. So I'd just like to see some of that funneled toward the kids, and maybe in conjunction with some of our other entities that, you know, in town that take care of that. So I'd just like to see it go toward the kids if we can, if we do get some of that money.
Mayor, one of the things that could be done is, I think in particular, the Boys and Girls Club, the youth club, and possibly YAL. And of course, you know, that goes without saying, you may have high contribution of pioneer, and leaving somebody out. They may also be potential partners, if you will, because it can be used for, it's limited to primarily opioids, but, I mean, there is, there is specific provision for providing, you know, childcare services for people in recovery, and things like that. So those are permissible expenditures.
Excellent. Okay. Any further discussion?
You know, we, as a health, healthcare community, and I worked in the hospital forever, and, you know, we, back in the 80s, it was, we're under-medicating, we're under-medicating, and we didn't look at the whole picture, and then we, we created an issue, and we cut people off, and the drug companies targeted, especially the Virginias, West Virginia, they really, I've read lots of books on the pain epidemic and the opioid epidemic, and some really sad stories, so I'm grateful that we're getting the money, and I would agree with Councilman Lynn, we need to use it in the right. Hopefully, we can use some right things. We don't have a lot, pioneers, some of the councilings, we have a little bit, but we don't have the opportunity to give as much as other communities do, but maybe we can expand what we can do with that, with some of these monies.
I have a quick question. So the Purdue Pharma opioid settlement in January 2005 was approximately 7.4 billion of combined payments from the Sackler family and a company to resolve thousands of lawsuits tied to OxyContin. Is that the amount, the 1.8% of the 7.4 billion, or is it broken down into?
It's broken down, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
Councilor Hagman, Hagman, it's broken down, it's not of the one, it's not of the 7 billion, because they allocate it, and then there's a portion that's allocated to states, and that's what are 1 point some percent. And that's, that's out of Wyoming's share. So it's 1.8% of whatever Wyoming's going to receive. No, it's not $7 billion.
Be nice. It was. Further discussion?
Do we know, do we know what we've received in the past for this?
And I think Trudy can get that for you.
I think about 158,000 I have there that we've received.
We can provide that information. There's, I said, there's six or seven of them, but we can tell you.
Thank you.
I didn't remember any of them being, you know, super-large amounts. I just, you know, cumulatively 150,000, so it's not, it sounds big to begin with, but when it trickles down to us, it's not, not as big as it starts.
If we can pass, Mayor, we've used some for Narcan purchases, is that right, Chief?
That's correct.
And training on cyber training, I think, wasn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Wrong. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Departments. Mr. Robinson, I see you back there. What's?
Good night, Robinson.
Mr. Newsom.
Good night.
Mr. O'Neil.
I do, Your Honor.
Come on. Let us have it.
Okay.
Come up to the microphone. We don't miss a word.
Just a reminder that this Saturday is Lemonade Day here in Evanston. We have about 70, maybe just north of 70, young entrepreneurs registered for the program and excited, and probably a little nervous for what's going to happen this Saturday, so just want to encourage everyone to go out and take your $5 bill, $10, $20 bill for some of you big dogs out there. Drive around town and buy some lemonade and some local goodies from the kids, and be patient and be supportive, and just want to say I'm proud of all those kids that did it. I know when you're in elementary school and it's summertime, it's, you know, when you got an iPad in front of you, the last thing you want to do is?
They're going to be all over town.
They're going to be all over town. So you can go on our website, lemonade day.org/evanston, and click the stands button, and you can see on the map where some of the kids who completed the curriculum put their stands up there, but just drive around town and, and spread the word. So that's all.
Excellent, and thank you, Rocco, for getting that project going. I think that's strong work. Thank you. Cool. Let's see. Ms. Larson.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief Rannish.
Yes, sir. Need to save some time for the front stoppage, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lynn.
Nothing.
Ms. Harris.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Ms. Harris.
Just to be aware of council, there's a legislative, I think it's a gaming, can't remember the name of the joint committee now, but the gaming, there's a committee meeting, is it the 8th of August?
7th of August, I believe.
Yeah.
It's the 7th.
It's at the district, Joint County School District Number One Board.
Yes.
And they're going to be talking about gaming licensing, and one of the moves to look at is, right now, those facilities are approved by counties located in the corporate units of the city. So one of the bills is to, is to give councils authority to license those facilities.
Excellent. Yes, thank you for that reminder.
That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Public participation. Is there any area from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? Please. Sellers?
My name is Diane Sellers. I'm board president of the Arts, Inc. board, and on behalf of the board, I would just like to say thank you very much for passing our resolution. These funds will be very, very helpful to our organization and what we're doing to bring the arts to the community. Most recently, we had Mat Camp, just finished a little over a week ago. We had a little bit higher enrollment. We had 160 students this year, 28 teachers, many of them local. With those teachers, they're able to, you know, help the students and, and bring their talents to the community. We appreciated the grant that we got from the Evanston Lodging and Tax Board that helped with further reach on advertising. We are increasing our overnight student lodging program and have plans to even increase that for next year. That allows some students to attend and have lodging here that are out of, out of state or out of city. So that's a good program. With all of that, the other thing I'm a little bit sad to, I am a lot sad to report, is our Celtic Festival manager that we had had to resign. So he had barely gotten started, and he had to resign because of things that happened with his own work. They really built up, and he wanted even, he'll be traveling a lot, and wasn't able to do that. So we are re-advertising for that, so we do have our music manager, we have bands that are being booked as we speak, so we're moving forward with the festival, and it will happen. It's just, I wish that we had that manager. He was going to be great, but going back to the, to Mat Camp and, and also the Bowen Young Musician Festival, we are so excited that we're having a chamber mixer on Monday, on August 11th. And Jill Holmes, one of our board members, has been, she spearheaded this. It was her idea, it was fabulous idea to do this. Mountain Music has opened up their place of business for us to go there, because we don't have a storefront, so it'll be at Mountain Music from 5 to 7 next Monday. It's so exciting. I mean, you're not, not that you're going to see anything from this, but we have 13 dance and musical numbers that are coming. The Laura Huggard, the manager of the Young Musician Festival, or she, she put this together and worked with the people at Mat Camp, so they work together. So we have these students coming, so every 10 minutes, we're going to have another production of somebody sharing their talents. There will be some of the things on display that the kids did at mat camp. And I think that people don't really, you know, I'm glad that Councilman Lynn, that you, you know, are aware of this, and our kids went when they were, when they were young. But I think a lot of people in the community don't really understand what these, what these things can do for the kids. And so we're having this mixer to let people know so that they can come and actually participate and be entertained by these kids. There's going to be refreshments. So we invite everybody to come and hope that you can come and support us August eleventh from five to seven at Mountain Music. I have some invitations. We're passing some out to the board heads, and I'll pass them out to you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Anyone else? Please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy Cook, nine twelve Maine. First of all, all we can hear is Jen talking. We can't hear anybody else, just so you know. And then a few weeks ago, I talked about the weeds and cleaning out the trees. And then I found out that a volunteer moved here recently, and she's been doing all of the weeds. She picked all the weeds and pulled the tree things, the tree, the new little trees growing up. She was out there every day. I saw her picking weeds on buildings, picking weeds in the sidewalks, and it was all her that did it. So I, I appreciate that, and I don't know who she is, but I thank her for that. She even pulled a weed that was in our building that I couldn't get out. Also, is this session live on YouTube?
Not tonight. Evidently not.
Why isn't it, why isn't it live? Because Mike can't see it.
I'm, I don't know. I have no idea.
Preston's not.
It's an open meeting. Preston's not here.
Right.
Yeah, so Preston's our, our IT guy, but it's an open meeting.
He's not here?
Yeah.
No.
It's being recorded.
It's being recorded, yeah.
Okay, it's just not live.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Also, I would like to invite, excuse me, everyone to the Train Festival this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Roundhouse. It should be a lot of fun, and I know it, everybody in. Now, what Jen said tonight is, made me very depressed. What can we do? What can we do as a city? What can we do as individuals? How can we fix this?
Well, you can't do, we can't do anything as a city, which is why I prefaced it, because there's, you know, it hasn't happened yet. But the main thing is to call Hagaman, to call Barasso, to call Loomis. Loomis and Hagaman have, are part of the sponsors of these bills. And let the, and there's votes on this, so the Buffalo, that closes on the seventh of August, in just a few days, to get public participation. They must get public participation, but if, the trick is to read through the, the distracting narrative of, you know, it sounds good like cartels, but when you look into it, it's stopping cartel, cartels for all those resources for one human being and diverting those funds away from the state and the cities and municipalities, as well as allowing all of that federal, it's, it is one hundred percent big government at its finest. It is the encroachment and overseeing of all our public lands, which is why we all live here, is our public lands. And so, yeah, especially the ones that take away the tribal sovereignty, because the tribes have held, are unbeknownst to most Americans, the tribal lands and the tribes are the gatekeepers for our public lands. And their power is immense with the section one oh six of the Historical Preservation Act. And there are so many tribes involved in this, but if they remove that, I mean, we have the Shoshone and the Arapaho and the Navajo and the Nez Perce and the, the list goes on, the Comanche, the Sioux Nation. They all have rights in Wyoming to certain grounds. Some of them are not even, are documented. And why they have so much power is because they can tie up big corporations and the federal government from selling land for years and years and years and years. And it is a precedent that is in stone. So by devaluing the tribes, that's how they get around it with this brand new portion of the bill that just passed that allows drugs to be classified as, you know, cartel activity to be described as national security threat. But if anybody, if you put your thought to it for a nanosecond, cartels, their business model isn't the middle of BFE Wyoming where the winter locks you in ten months a year. They need to be by highways. We have more cartel activity in Evanston than they see in Wind River because we are right by, we're in I eighty corridor. That's the business model. So this is infringement of its finest and highest caliber, especially with drones.
Another thing is, I, I would like the newspaper to print what you wrote, what you read earlier. Thank you.
I will, I will say with regard to the microphones, we are looking into, some of those wheels turn a little slowly, but we are looking into some improvements of our, of our sound system, but it's, it's coming. It's not here yet, obviously, but it's coming.
I can't hear you now.
I tried to lean forward high, far enough to let it get my voice, so I apologize for that, but we are looking into some things, so it's, it's in the works, I feel. Bear with us a little bit. We'll, we'll get there. Anyone else like to speak to the council? Please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to repeat that, let's work on the sound system. I did, I just learned tonight you have an IT guy, and you know the Bluetooth speakers that people, I mean, microphones that they just clip on work really, really well. And it seems like what's happening is, I'll hear ninety percent of it, and then the most important word just goes away. So it is important. And the other thing I have is a question, like on resolution twenty-five forty-four regarding this transmission pipeline, on the website agenda, there were a number of sort of technical or jargonistic things that didn't make sense to me. And I'm wondering, where can I find some information about those things? Is there, would I have access to the city engineer or?
You can make a phone call out there anytime, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I'd like to, I'm curious about what, what it actually means and what's going on and where it is and all that.
I'll talk to you. He's a nice guy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If there is not, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone.